I'll keep looking for Jim. Okay, Lisa Bradley is the court reporter and she's on. Lisa, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so do we start?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on December 9, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting, oh gosh, I lost my cursor, excuse me. Sorry. And by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on November 25, 2020, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonedj.gov. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, The Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay.
Mr. Cohen? Yes.
Yes, here.
Ms. Coulson? Here. Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Valvani? Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a couple of administrative matters. The resolution of the Open Public Meetings Act of 2021. What do we have on that? Claudia, Derek?
Claudia, the minutes?
One second. Mr. Davich, hold on. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson? Yes. Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so the administrative matters, the resolutions of the Open Public Meeting Acts for 2021, I guess which include the notice of special meeting, charges for subscribers for the agenda mailings, and the 2021 annual meeting calendar. Do we vote on that or what do we do?
Yes.
Okay.
We just need a motion, I think, in a second, all in favor should be fine.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I move approval.
I second.
Okay. I guess Claudia?
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson? Yes. Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Okay. The next matter on the agenda are the minutes from July 22. Has everybody looked at those? If there are no comments, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Who's second?
Even Schreiber.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have two resolutions this evening. The first is case number 2020-819, 29 Green Street, Block 17.02, Lot 23 in the R4 Zone in the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District.
Court members, I had circulated to you a revised version with the changes highlighted in red.
Okay.
I can go over those again if anyone has not had a chance to take a look at them. What's your pleasure?
Do that, please?
I can.
Too much?
Not at all. All right, so.
Not too time consuming, please?
Not at all. I think the first change is in item number eight numbered paragraph eight. It's the second paragraph. So item two, and the words were added, the applicant was encouraged by HPC to save as much as possible as they could of the wood flooring. Apparently, a lot of that may just be beams, but that language was added. If we look at here, numbered paragraph 10, it's the it's the fourth paragraph. It clarifies that what Mr. Hayden testified was that the front portion of the foundation is what they can salvage. So that is what they are going to be using. We've also clarified that the applicant's going to provide a front porch, but the entrance will still be on the side of the house. So we'll see a front porch, but it's not really the house entrance. And if we go on to numbered paragraph 13, we've clarified that the applicant's going to comply with conditions 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9 of the HPC resolution. What we took out was the recommendation for tire tracks on the driveway because the applicant, after discussion with the board, decided it was going to be a traditional solid surface driveway. And then if we go on now to our findings, it's paragraph three. Again, we again clarified the front portion of the foundation, which is going to be salvaged. And and then at the very end in the conditions, again, we clarified its conditions 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9 of the HPC resolution, taking out the tire tracks. And the last condition makes it clear, it's only the right-hand side driveway. It's going to be a traditional solid surface with no tire tracks. And those are the changes that were circulated to.
Thank you.
Okay, does, is everybody comfortable with this? And if so, would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second, anyone?
I'll second it.
Okay. Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein? Thank you.
Okay, the second resolution is KC 2020-849, 22 Stockton Street, Block 37.01, Lot 17 in the R3 Zone of the borough. Have people reviewed the motion or the resolution in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments? If not a motion would be good.
I move approval.
Second.
Who's second?
Schreiber.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Chen? Yes.
George?
Yes.
Okay, we have two applications this evening. The first is KC 2020-906, 39 Tyson Lane, Block 4601, Lot 7 in the R4 Zone. Derek, would you like to read your memo on this?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, before you testify, I'll just note the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction and we will swear you in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The owner and applicant are Rishi and Niti Modi. They are seeking a C1 variance permit to development of a single family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. The subject lot does not comply with the required lot width. Properties in the R4 Zone in the former township land use ordinance. And in the township, lot width is measured at the front, at all parts of the house. And the house must comply with that lot area. So the section is 10B 247. No lot shall have an area depth or frontage less than shown on the schedule of regulations. And no lot shall be less in width as measured through any existing pros building on any part thereof than the minimum lot shown on that schedule. So in this situation, the prevailing front yard setback, I believe, is 45 feet. And the lot's got an odd shape. It's a trapezoidal shape that gets narrower as you go back. So basically, right at that 49-foot front yard setback, the lot width is like 124.99, and it gets narrower as you go back. So there's virtually no way, given the front yard setback, that this house, this lot can comply. The front yard setback was introduced to the township, I believe, three or four years ago. And just a little history, there's been a lot of conversation about this property. Got a lot of calls from, but I just want to point out that these folks went through the whole process. They got all the permits for engineering, tree removal, and all that. And then on the final stop in the process, and it came to my desk, and I realized they don't meet the lot width. So I had to, you know, tell them I needed to get a variance for that. I mean, obviously, the proof in these type of cases is can you acquire any land from an adjoining property owner to reduce the deficiency? And I'm sure the applicant will speak to that, but I just want to reiterate, they did get all the proper permits through the engineering and the tree removal as required by the municipal ordinances. And that's my synopsis of it. The lot width at the front facade requirement is 125, and the proposed is 124.3. And at the rear facade, it's again 125, and as the lot gets narrower, it's 109.8. And they are seeking a C1 variance relief for this deficiency. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
No. All right, just one, I believe, Claudia, you mentioned there are a number of people in the audience who want to speak to this or who are here for this case?
I think it's for 39 Tyson, the next.
That is, this is 39 Tyson. Yeah, we're doing Tyson first. So I just want to say, we are going to, obviously, hear all public comment. That won't be a problem. I think procedurally, the applicant will present his his application. The board will ask questions. When the board's done asking questions, then the, then the other participants who would like to speak on this will be allowed in. That's probably the most orderly way of doing it. So we'll let the applicant start and do his presentation of his application. Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Rishi. This is my wife, Niti.
Hi.
We were, I think our, the engineer was going to speak first, if that's at all possible. His name is Eric. He's probably on the Zoom.
What is his name?
Eric?
Eric, yes.
Mr. Modi, I'm just going to ask that you and your wife raise your right hand so we could swear you in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I do.
Okay, if you would like your engineer to speak, we need to swear him in also. If he's here?
Yep, I am.
Okay, if she's here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, all right. Identify yourself, please, and be sworn in.
And can you put your video on so we can see you?
Oh. I thought it started automatically usually.
Okay, and sir, what's your full name?
It's Eric Rupnain. R U P N A R A I N.
And sir, you're a licensed professional engineer?
Yes.
Okay. And are you, are you with the Golden Bound Bail Engineering Firm?
Correct.
Okay, then we will swear you in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I think, have you just, have you testified before this board before?
I have.
You have, okay. All right. I assume then you are licensed. We will accept you as an expert. Please continue.
Thank you. Um, as Derek indicated, the Modis are here before the board for a hardship C1 variance dealing with the existing lot width. Their property is identified as Lot 7 in Block 46.01, and this property is located on the northerly side of Tyson Lane. This is an existing lot within the borough, within the township or the previous township section of the municipality. Previously, there was an existing two-story home on this site that was demolished. The Modis acquired a property in Ju, July of this year and have since been working diligently on securing permits and approvals in order to build their new home where they hope to reside with their two children. This particular property, and the reason why we're here in front of this board is because after filing for our permits for construction, Derek, your zoning officer noted that the existing property is non-conforming in terms of lot width. I'm not quite sure if there's a way for you to share my screen, but or if you could give me permission to show I could.
Yeah, Claudia can give me.
You have permission, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, share screen. So what I've noted or what I'm sharing with the board is this is a copy of the tax map. And where my cursor is, this is Lot 7, and this is the property currently owned by the Modis that we're seeking.
I don't see anything yet on the screen.
No, not yet, sir.
Okay.
Okay, now we.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if you could see my cursor, this is Lot 7, and this is currently the property that's owned by the Modi that's in front of the board. As Derek previously indicated, the property has an irregular shape. It's actually very deep. It's a little, about 330 feet deep. And at the street line along Tyson Lane, the property is about 136 feet wide, but narrows to about 69.9 feet at the rear. With the current prevailing front setback that's required in the R4 Zone that the site is located, that it is impossible, there is no location on this property where the required 125-foot lot width can be, can be provided within the other setback requirements of the R4 Zone. The property and the current proposal fully conforms with all of the other bulk requirements for the R4 Zones in terms of side yard setbacks, setback to height ratio, building height, floor area ratio, lot coverage. The applicant is fully compliant. The only relief that's being sought tonight is the requirement for the minimum lot width. In looking at the property and the two adjoining lots, the applicant has contacted the owner to the west, which is Lot 8, in regards to acquiring additional lands to eliminate the need for a lot width variance. And that particular property owner is not willing to sell any property. The only other property that's available in order to try to mitigate the lot variance would be the lot to the east of us, which is identified as Lot 6. This property presently is about 0.8 acres. The minimum requirement is 0.75 acres for the R4 Zone. This lot is about 128 feet wide at the street line and 120 feet wide at the back. In order to eliminate the lot width variance for Lot 7, about 15 feet of additional properties would have to be acquired. Unfortunately, given the current configuration of Lot 8, it is impossible to acquire sufficient lands from that property to eliminate our variance without making Lot 8 non-conforming. So as the current configuration and geometry of all the properties surrounding and abutting the Modi's property, it is impossible for the applicant to eliminate the particular variance by acquiring additional lands. The current proposal fully conforms with all of the bulk requirements in the ordinance. The residential use proposed is permitted in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is not seeking any other relief aside from the lot variance. We've attempted to mitigate the need for that variance, but unfortunately, with the adjoining properties being barely sufficiently sized for this zone and Lot 8 unwilling to sell lands to eliminate the variance, the applicant cannot eliminate this particular hardship that's been created. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those from the board. And otherwise, I will turn it back over to the Modis and.
Sir, would you, would you like this to be Exhibit A1?
Yes, please.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to say, just for clarification, I could see why you did it, but you were talking about, first you were talking about Lot 8, and then you went to the other side. You were actually talking about Lot 6.
Correct.
And it looks like an 8, but I think you were, anyway. Did others catch that? I think you were talking about it when you said it wouldn't be possible to buy from Lot 8. So I just wanted to, I hope that's not making it more confusing, but you were referring to Lot 6 and calling it, but calling it Lot 8. And maybe people noticed that or understood what you meant with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to eliminate the shared screen and we can put the Modis on?
Yep, there you go.
Bye. So would you like to add something to the testimony of the engineer?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Niti Modi, and this is my husband, Rishi, who introduced himself already. We want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. We've lived in Littlebrook, in the Littlebrook section of Princeton for the last seven and a half years since the summer of 2013. We both work locally. I'm a neurologist in the community, and my husband here works in finance. Our kids attend the elementary schools here, and we've grown to love this town. Therefore, we decided to build a family home where we can set our roots here for the long term. As you know, it's not easy to find lots to build in Princeton, so we have been keeping an eye on the neighborhood for the last year now. When we originally found out that this property was coming on the market back in May, we were excited by its location, specifically its proximity to Littlebrook, as well as the proximity to Randall Road where we currently live and the neighborhood that we've grown to become a part of over the last seven years. Over the last seven months, we've invested a lot of resources, time, emotions, in moving forward with this project. Since July, when we closed on the purchase of the property, we've been submitting blueprints to the township, demolishing the previous home, and getting the lot ready for building. We received our tree permit approval, demo permit approvals, and engineering permit approvals. And then unfortunately, in October, October 28, we were blindsided by this obscure ordinance and were refused a zoning permit from the township. We never expected that this would become such a hurdle for us and that we would need a zoning permit to move forward with this project. We've taken our two children to 39 Tyson regularly over the last six months so that they could follow the process and join us in our excitement for the new home. If this variance were not approved, this would cause a great deal of sadness to them as well. Therefore, we're requesting a C1 hardship variance based on the lot width at the rear of the house. The current law is situated on an angle. And because of this, the lot reduces at the rear of the house. We designed a house that complies with FAR, complies with setbacks, complies with height to setbacks, as well as impervious limits. Simply put, we seek to build a conforming home that blends in the neighborhood on an irregularly shaped and thus non-conforming lot. We contacted Mr. Buttra, our neighbor to the left at 140 Littlebrook, and asked if he would like to sell some of his property to help us conform. He said he'd rather not. With regards to the neighbors to the right at 33 Tyson, as Eric already explained, if they were to sell us a piece of the property, it would become, their lot would become non-conforming as well. Therefore, we ask that you approve this variance tonight so that we could move forward on building a home for our family at 39 Tyson. We feel that the current situation does qualify as a hardship because otherwise this lot would be deemed as unusable land. This would result in a very significant loss, both financially and emotionally to our family. And I'm going to turn it over to Rishi.
Good evening. I'm Rishi. I also, I also would like to thank you for taking the time this evening to listen to us. I just want to take a few minutes to address the objection to the variance that was filed a couple of days ago on the township website. First, for background purposes, one of the things that we love about Princeton is the natural environment surrounding us, which of course includes the beautiful and abundant trees throughout the town. It is worth stating that in our seven years of living on Randall Road, we have not removed a single tree from our property. However, with regards to 39 Tyson, the situation was unfortunately different. It was quickly apparent to my wife and I that the land and the trees on the property were likely neglected. As to our eyes, many of the trees appear to be rotting or already dead. One tree trunk, in fact, was laying out on the property. To be clear, this worry went beyond aesthetic concerns, i.e., we were concerned that several of these trees not only pose a danger to our home, but also could pose a significant risk to our young children who spend a lot of time in the yard and potentially to our neighbors as well. Our concern was validated when we heard from Joe, our builder, and Taylor, the town arborist, that several of the trees on the property were in fact diseased and/or defective. With respect to the concerns described within the objection letter, of the 40 trees listed on the survey submitted, 38 trees were highlighted by the objectors as being removed. This figure warrants some additional context. Please bear with me as I detail the numbers. Two of the trees with structural defects were removed at the request of the township because they were directly adjacent to electrical lines. Six of the trees were inaccurately labeled as elm trees by the survey, by the surveyor, but later corrected by Taylor to be ash trees and therefore deemed exempt per town, per the town. In total, there were eight exempt ash trees. All of these trees had emerald ash-bore insects in them, which I've learned is an insect that attacks ash trees from within and can cause tree death. Seven other trees were exempt due to their disease condition. And lastly, there were 10 trees or shrub that were under eight inches diameter that were also exempt because they were under a size. That were also exempt because they were under a size, many of which were in the way of the construction of the home. Therefore, the objectors are incorrect in stating that approximately forty trees were removed with, this is their quote, disregard for Princeton's rules regarding tree removal. If I can be clear, this is absolutely not the case. In total, eleven non-exempt trees were removed. Most of these were removed due to construction purposes. For example, we learned that they were planted on top of utility lines. To offset the removal of these eleven non-exempt trees, Joe and Taylor submitted a tree replacement program. Which includes pressing uh planting sixteen fresh trees on the property to replace the ones that were removed. This would be five more trees than required by the township. My builder Joe was in constant communication with the township arborist and me with respect to every tree that was removed. And every tree removed was in fact accounted for and allowed for the permit issued by the township. My wife and I appreciate our neighbors' love for trees. Again, we share that love. So we do understand your concerns. Therefore, we want to be inclusive and listen to their thoughts on tree replanting on the property if we were allowed to move forward with building our new home. To this end, I've personally reached out to each of the six objectors listed on the objection letter ahead of tonight's meeting. Of the six, I was only able to get ahold of Mr. Bernabe at thirty-three Tyson Lane and Mr. Parsons at one oh seven Random Road yesterday. I had a very nice phone conversation with both of them. My understanding is that Mr. Bernabe's chief concern is the need for landscaping along our shared property line. To ensure his backyard and the porch at the rear of his home. In particular, has adequate privacy. I completely understand his concern and I've assured him that we will come up with a plan that he is satisfied with. I also had a very pleasant conversation with Mr. Parsons and he seemed very open to working with us as well. In addition, as a token of good faith to the neighborhood, this week we've asked Joe to revise the true replacement plan to plant twenty-five new trees, which is up from the original plan of sixteen new trees I mentioned earlier. And which is also fourteen more new trees than the township requires. In conclusion, I just want to, I want to reiterate how much our family loves living in Littlebrook. As my wife mentioned, we've been here for seven years. If allowed to proceed, we would be building our home with every intention of living there for thirty, forty, or who knows, maybe fifty years like some of our neighbors. Moreover, we would hope to build an attractive home that blends in aesthetically pleasing landscaping that'll age gracefully over time and fit in with its immediate and broader surroundings, both in Littlebrook and in Princeton. Thank you so much for your time and I'll turn it back to Eric.
So again, on behalf of the applicants. Um, we would like to thank the board for taking the time to listen to our presentation and the request that is being sought tonight. Um, once again, as we've indicated previously, the proposal before the board fully conforms with all aspects of the zoning ordinance. The only relief that we're seeking is the lot width and unfortunately, the applicant is unable to acquire any lands to eliminate the lot with variance. Um, so we hope the board, as you move forward with your deliberations. If there are any questions that we can answer, we will be more than happy to do so.
Okay. Is that, that's the conclusion of your testimony?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Are there any members of the board who'd like to ask any questions of this applicant? Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question um for the applicant and possibly also for Mr. Bridger. Was there a variance for the home that was demolished on the lot with the geometry?
Please, can you speak a little louder?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The question is for the home that was demolished. Was there a variance in effect concerning the geometry of that lot? If either the applicant or Mr. Bridger has has information, please.
I, I can answer that question. It it really all stems from the introduction of the prevailing front yard setback before the setback was twenty-five feet. So when the setback was twenty-five feet forward, there was a lot more lot width and a house could comply on that, that, that section of the property. There was no variance before, so the the prevailing front yard setback, I think, was introduced in two thousand sixteen. And uh, so that's was designed to have more of a, you know, harmonious setback of all the adjoining properties, but in this case where you didn't have that before, sometimes it creates situations of unintended consequences. So there was no variance before that I could find for this property.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, um, if there are no other questions, I'd like to open this up to public comment. Anybody in the audience who would like to participate? Okay. Number of people, okay, so if Claudia or Eve, if you can identify someone and let them in.
I think Claudia's moved two people.
I think it's three people. I got Denise, Lawrence and Sheila. I can't see Sheila. She's uh. Here she is. Anybody else just raise their hand and we'll move you over.
I think Denise wanted to start first and actually um she had prepared and had sent um, I think to Derek, our objection and uh some actually exhibits, photographs of the site.
Excuse me one second. Can we, uh, can you identify yourself and and be sworn in?
Okay, Denise, I guess I'll go ahead. All right. Okay. All right. So I'm Sheila Nall. I live at eighty Random Road. Um, and uh, so certainly.
Ma'am, before you keep speaking, we just need to swear you in. That's fine. Do you swear from your testimony will be truthful?
Sure.
Thank you.
Within my ability. So, yeah, so um I think most of the the objectors live obviously in the neighborhood and we walk around the neighborhood a lot and I think the biggest concern uh, that flew in my face was being able to hear the mowing down of those trees. What, a couple of months ago, maybe September or whatever. Um, you know, it just sounded like death to me from uh over on Random Road, which is where I live. So, you know, we walked past what, you know, essentially is a bomb site and it's very, very upsetting. You know, I did reach out to Taylor and and I did see that most of those trees were diseased and it was uh interesting, but I had a question as to why were the trees all mown down? And um, we were left with a bomb site in our neighborhood before a building permit was uh provided. So that, that's one. Two, we, we do object to the idea of a, an oversized house being built on an undersized lot and we, we understand that the lot is essentially unbuildable, but the point being that um the house is proposed, the lot that is undersized, the house that's being proposed is very substantial in size and the two just don't seem to mesh very well and particularly now with the new exposure to the side of the neighbor's house. Um, one of the things I'd also like to say about Mr. Batra, it's not that Mr. Batra would refuse to um sell you his land. He's legally prohibited from selling his land because he is within Karnasa Park. Karnasa Park uh deed restrictions preclude the ability to subdivide. We've just gone through a huge lawsuit to ensure that those deed restrictions are complied with by all of our neighbors. We had two people who were trying to defy that and we were able to um to overcome that with a lawsuit. So Mr. Batra is not allowed to sell you any of his land because that would be the equivalent of subdividing and he cannot do that. So we um Denise, myself, some of the other objectors have just gone through that uh lawsuit. Uh, and maybe you're still feeling a little bit of that pain. But um, we are, you know, we just want to look out for our neighborhood. We want to make sure that people are complying with all of the requirements. I mean, all of the requirements that are laid down and um for all of the properties. Um, that's why we're objecting and um that's our point. And then one other thing, I know you guys tried to reach out to us last night and I kind of found that inappropriate. Just wanted to let you know that as well, that you know, you had access to our names and tried to reach out to us prior to this. And to me, uh, I found that objection. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Denise, would you like to say something? And also, do we have that exhibit that we can share?
Oh, I have an exhibit and I can, I can share it if I'm, once I'm sworn in.
You, uh, excuse me, can you please again identify yourself and be sworn in?
Uh, I'm Denise Malzerall. I live at one thirty Littlebrook, which is um next to the Batra, so two doors down from the uh thirty-nine Tyson lot and I swear to tell the truth. To the best of my ability.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, let me share my screen. So could you see this now?
Yes.
Okay, so um we were surprised, I think, at what happened um on, at thirty-nine Tyson. It came without any notice. And I just have here a few pictures. This is the, this is the letter that um these neighbors sent um to you only two days ago because we only found out about this when we received the certified letters. Um, this is what is actually on the publicly available website regarding the tree situation. I, I and others on this letter have reached out to the arborist multiple times unsuccessfully to get his report. Including phone calls and emails. So we were going off what was available on the public website and it indicated all of these trees. Um, and they're all gone. We um noted that there was a legend here showing an existing tree and tree to be removed. And that all the trees are gone and so it didn't seem to correspond with what had been indicated here. And we're very pleased to hear that um the Modi's are um interested in planting twenty-five trees. But we're concerned that some of these trees, as you'll see in a moment, are were huge. I live two doors down and um I'm fairly familiar with that property. I had never had the impression that the trees were completely diseased. It just happens that my, so here's, here's the thirty-nine Tyson lot, Google, Google picture of it. You can see, you know, heavily tree neighborhood all the way around. Um, you can then see, this is picture my daughter took as she was horrified that the trees were being removed, cut down. And so there's deer here. You can see that some of these trees are really, you know, very large as well as the ones that were um cut here. This is a picture of the side of the previous house. And again, you can see these enormous trees that to my eye, they never appeared diseased. They looked quite green and leafy and behaved like you know, large trees seem to do, which is just to sort of be there and be a shield. Here's what the lot looks like now. Um, the house, you can't tell. Unfortunately, we never planned to take pictures. We weren't really thinking about it, but the house was modest in, in width. Um, and this is the house that's next door. They've put the um barriers up to indicate their lot. And you can see that their lot goes right up to the border of thirty-one Tyson. And so there's no land available there. On the other side, as Sheila pointed out, it's Karnasa Park. Um, and uh, by deed restrictions, they're forbidden to sell anything from their lot. So this lot cannot be changed. Um, what we proposed was that um trees be replanted and I'm pleased to hear they're up for that, but also that um the house they're proposing really maxes out what would be allowed on this lot if this lot were conforming. And I think we generally feel uncomfortable with such a large house on a non-conforming narrow lot. And we're hoping that the new house might be more along those lines of the footprint of the previously existing. So that's, that's all I really need to say.
Okay, thank you. Can we hear for the next, from the next person, please?
I need to figure out how to unshare my screen. I'm not actually seeing that right now. Oh wait, here we go.
Do I have a screen? Yes. My name is Larry Parsons. I live at one oh seven Random Road with my wife Jean.
Mr. Parsons, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I swear that it will be truthful.
Thank you.
And I wanted, that was my next thing to say was that I'll be truthful. Um, I had a very interesting conversation with Mr. Modi uh last night as he indicated. And the one thing that we came up with, with that might be helpful is to compromise their requirements for house and and to come in as close to conformance with the property lines, which is in setbacks. It would be helpful to both the municipality and to them, the owners and the occupants of the new, new house. And he very kindly explained all of what he explained to you tonight about the trees. And how that they had to be torn, taken down because of diseases and so forth. And now I think he under, uh, he told me that there were disease, uh, invasions of vermin in the house, so it had to be torn down or needed to be anyway. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, so did I hear somebody say something?
I'm, I see just one other name, but I'm not sure if that, I think, I'm not, that may be for our next case, so I'm not. Claudia, do you?
It's certainly is for the next case.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, um, so if there are no more public comments, then I'll close the public portion to the meeting, of the meeting. And we will go into executive session. Uh, the only thing I would ask is of the Modi's is do you want to respond at all to any of the neighbors' comments?
I mean, no, we uh, look, we uh really appreciate hearing from them. Um, you know, I, I understand how they feel when they walk by the lot, even we feel a little bit like that too. There's, it's starting. But again, we, we did, we did everything that, you know, we thought, you know, was recommended to us and we believe was the right thing to do, given what we're trying to do with this home. We're making a commitment to plant uh, fresh trees to replace many trees which were diseased or defected and, you know, I'm not an arborist, but that's what I heard from Mr., from, from Taylor. And um, you know, I can just tell you what I saw. And um, look, at the end of the day, we want to be great neighbors to the, you know, to, to everyone we've just met as well as everyone we're going to meet once we move there, if we're allowed to build this house. You know, we love living on Randall Road. It's this, you know, we, we make great relationships here and I'm sure we'll do the same thing on, on Tyson Lane. And, and the surrounding streets.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you. Um, and now let's, uh, as I said, we'll go into executive session. Are there any comments from board members? Any questions, any comments?
Yeah, I've been looking over the sheet of what's existing and proposed and required. And the segment.
Can you please speak a little louder?
The segment on floor area ratio appears to be blank on the sheet that I've got. And I'm just wondering what the numbers are. Uh, Mr. Bridger, if you have that. See.
I, I, the allowance is fifteen percent and what they propose is fourteen point nine eight percent. I think it's in my letter and I did find it in the documents that were on the web website.
Oh, okay, great. So the point is the floor error ratio that they're proposing is actually a tad bit less than the maximum.
Okay. And I believe the uh, it conforms in terms of setback and height and uh all other areas are conforming.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, I, I, in my opinion, um, the trees, although obviously when we looked at the lot, it's uh, it's, it's been cleared. Um, I understand the Modi's were dealing with. the Modi's were dealing with, you know, a lot that had a number of diseased and damaged trees. And I agree with them that obviously, if, if they are in bad shape, they need to come out. It's, it's better to take them out now than have something fall. And the fact that they have agreed to plant additional trees is is, is some gesture of mitigation, which I think is, is good. The house itself is conforming. The lot is a very difficult lot. I mean, the house basically can be one foot wide and 75 feet long. It's, it's very difficult. So I think that this, in this particular case, I think this is, is truly a hardship. So anybody else like to comment? Michael? You're muted.
Yeah, just on the point, someone did make a statement that it was an undersized lot. It, it is not, as far as lot area, it actually exceeds the number of square footage. So I just wanted to point out, it is not an undersized lot. It's a, it's a conforming lot.
Conforming in terms of lot area?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to just, I'd like to ask Eric or the Modi's. So when you bought the lot and you started to do the plans, you had the Arborist tell you what trees had to come down. Is that true?
So initially, when we put the zoning permit plan together, there are certain trees that we identified that we believe would have to be removed in order to accommodate the home and the grading needed, in order to meet all of the building code requirements. So that's typically how we decide what trees we think needs to be removed. And on that basis, we would then propose the number of replacement trees in accordance with the ordinance. Normally, and I think what Taylor typically does when he inspects the properties, to conform, confirm what we are showing on the drawings, if there's any additional trees that are misidentified or noted incorrectly, it's reconciled at that point in time. In this particular case, which a lot of the ash trees in almost all of New Jersey, they're dying. If they haven't died or started to die, they will die. And that's just what we've noted. So a lot of the trees on the properties that were identified as elm, my office didn't do the location work, so we took it from the survey drawings that were prepared by the surveyor. Those trees that were actually ashes that were identified as elm, we would have typically showed those as trees to be removed, because they're trees that we know are in the process of dying or will die.
Okay, but all the trees that were taken down were approved. It was an approved demolition.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
I, I have a question about those, the ash trees in the neighborhood. I know it's not necessarily outside the property at issue. But are there many ash trees in this neighborhood, if you are aware, just by visual inspection, that will be subject to either, you know, death or dying?
I, I can't speak to any of the trees outside of the property, unfortunately. But even like, for instance, my office is here in Lambertville. And this was a relatively recent development, about 20 years ago, where part of the landscaping plan that we prepared for this area included several ashes. And the landlord this past couple of weeks ago actually came in, and they had to take all of the ash trees out because they were dying.
So, living two doors down, I can say there are quite a lot of ash trees in this neighborhood. We treat our ash trees, and they remain healthy with treatment.
But in this case, the Arborist approved taking down all the ash trees.
Correct. Yes.
We have not been able to see that report, so I don't know. We've asked and asked in the last nine days and have not gotten it, so we don't know what the Arborist has said.
I can confirm that the Arborists did confirm that the ash trees are exempt from the requirement, you can take them down because they're diseased, but I was able to, he sent me a copy of the report today, and I asked the applicant to share their copy of the report. I don't know if they have it. I just have it, a copy off my phone, which I'm not able to share, but Eric, if you have the report, just to, you know, satisfy the neighbors that it was, you know, what we're saying is actually what happened, that would be helpful.
Certainly, I have a copy, so if I can get a screenshot, screen share permission, I will certainly put it on record.
Thank you.
So this is the report from the Arborist. This is one page. Oh, now, how do I get to the others? Oops. Bear with me for one moment, so I could just go. So that's the first page. That is the next.
The point here is that there is a report. Right?
Correct. And this is the final page.
Sir, do you want this to be an exhibit?
Yes, please.
Okay, exhibit A2 then, okay.
So I thought I saw the word ash on the second page. Is that, do we want to take a closer look at that, just to see what is said about the ash trees? Isn't that what we're?
No, I think that's a good idea. Maybe, maybe we could, maybe you could just read the section on the second page to us.
Okay, give me one moment, let me wrap that. Okay, um, ash on site are, I believe that word is dead due to emerald ash bore. Elm on plan mislabeled. They are green ash. White pine in front of labeled as spruce, okay.
It's hard to read what that says. Ash on site are?
The ash on site are in decline due to the emerald ash borer. The elm on the plan is misstated. They are green ash. The white pine in front as label, is labeled as spruce. I instructed the developer to remove the 24-inch pine, has a cracked leader over the primary line. The hemlock hedge adjacent to pine are nearly 80% to lack of light and hemlock addle god. I'm not sure what that word is, but.
Thank you, Derek.
And then the town doesn't reply requirements, doesn't require replacements for the ash, ash trees because of the emerald ash borer.
So with the, if we take out the ash trees from the total quantity of trees removed, how many trees would they be required to replace?
If you pull that back, it said, it says 38 trees were being removed, requiring 11 that need replacement due to the ordinance.
And, and right now, they're going to replace how many again?
25.
25. So they're required to replace 11, they're doing 25.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions regarding the, the tree report? Okay. Are there any other board members that would like to make a comment, ask a question, or in the absence of that, make a motion?
Is there?
I just have one question. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
I, I'm just wondering, is there a requirement as to the size of the replacement trees, based on the size of trees removed, or is it just total count?
I think it's a two and a half inch caliper.
Okay.
Is that correct, Eric? I believe.
I believe that's correct. And the requirement usually, depending on the size of the tree, will dictate the number of trees.
Well, there's, depending on the base diameter of the tree taken down, if it's up to, I guess, 17 inches, it's one tree. Replacement, if it's over 17, but less than 30.99 inches, it's two trees.
Trees, okay.
So that, based on that, that would yield 11 trees that need to be installed.
Right.
Correct.
All right, okay. And 25 are going to be put in.
Would they be bigger than two and a half inches?
And that's the ordinance requirement. That's up to the applicant, too.
But they had to be a minimum of two and a half, so. And obviously, obviously, that'll be reviewed on site when replaced. Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, with
Actually, just real quickly, I wanted to make sure, depending on how this goes, and I, I have a hunch of how it's going, to make sure that the Modi's are in contact, you know, consistent contact with their neighbor to the right, as you face, because they're that poor guy, I mean, his house is so exposed, and this has really had an impact on his property more than any of the others. So I just hope that, you know, that that communication is, is two-way, and they're very sensitive to screening his home. You know, because right now, it's just hanging out there all bare.
So, yes, I, I spoke with Mr. Bernaby twice in the last two days. We had a good conversation, like I mentioned, I assured him that we are going to make sure that he's happy with what we do on the privacy. You know, the privacy purposes on the shared property line. Again, it was a good conversation. I left feeling good about it. I think he let, I mean, he can speak for himself, but I felt that we, we were on the same page. You know, I, I met him, I met his wife in September. We exchanged phone numbers at the time. It was a very friendly conversation. So, you know, they've had my number. I, I now know that they have a concern. I didn't know that prior to this letter. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that he's, he's, he's happy, and to the extent, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I'll definitely make sure that he has input on what actually goes up, and again, that he's satisfied and, and happy with the outcome.
Thank you. Okay, board members. Anybody like to make a comment or a motion?
You know, I think what's tough here, and I, I'm sorry that I didn't, I'm sorry that I didn't spend more time walking around the neighborhood, but I have a feeling that I know it's a little bit like the neighborhood I live in, where the original houses are, are probably much smaller because that was what was built in the, you know, in the beginning. And as I look just at the plan here, it does, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's not an undersized lot, it's a strangely sized lot. And yet, what they've done, as I understand everything we've been saying, it, it's only non-conforming in, in one way, or there's, they, and so, and that's what we're talking about. But I can see how it's it probably, you know, in terms of fitting in with the other, or, or matching, being similar to the other houses, I have a feeling it, it probably really does not match those ashes. And again, I wish I had walked around a little bit more, so I could confirm that what I'm saying is true. But as I understand it, every other way, it's, it's conforming. Am I right?
Um, if I, I don't know if I could speak to that. I, I, I don't know. I mean, this is a very personal and subjective thing, you know, when you look at a home. But, you know, as you cross Littlebrook, I mean, in fact, I think our home is smaller than 130 Littlebrook. I think 109 Littlebrook, it's smaller. It's not by any stretch the largest home around that corner, which is directly adjacent to the home. So, I mean, that's just my, my opinion, but again, someone else may have a different opinion, but in looking at the homes all along Littlebrook, it's, and, and this is the last home on Tyson before you hit Littlebrook, you know, as you make that bend. It's actually, I mean, as far as my knowledge, and, you know, what's out there on public record, it's, it's not as big as those homes. So, you know, and again, like, we, we're going to try, do everything we can to make this blend and be aesthetically pleasing and, and, you know, a home that people walk by and, you know, not want to look at, you know, it's, it's, we're very tuned into that concern. We're working with a great builder who's built many, you know, we think attractive homes. And, you know, especially hearing all the comments today and the concerns, we hear you loud and clear. We really want to make sure that, you know, this house fits in the neighborhood and, and ultimately will be looked upon favorably. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak. I, I'm Greg Hughes. I'm on the letter there. If I am allowed to speak.
Well, please, go ahead.
Okay, so, thanks.
Mr. Hughes, we need to swear you in. Do you swear from any testimony you give will be truthful?
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, I do, yes. Look, to the Modi's, thank you so much for, I mean, I appreciate you guys, and I know this is not an easy conversation to have, and I appreciate, and I know how you feel. So thank you for your, your honesty and generosity here. And just to speak to the community, so the first thing I think that we see, so I think it was mentioned a little bit earlier, but the Karnassa Park Association that does exist, we have significantly different setbacks. And so that does change the look of the homes and this, and, and the feel of the lots. And I think that's what many of us that are residents in the neighborhood recognize, and what we've come to appreciate. And so while we recognize that this lot is not within that group, the homes around it are, and so that's one thing that we notice. And that is, you know, obviously, you are the township, and you are not deciding upon those things. But to your, whoever was discussing how it looks different, I think that's part of the reason that it, it would look different here. I think, you know, to many, for many of us that live here, I think the bigger issue that we face, and, and, and I, I'm happy that you guys have addressed the tree issue and the lot issue, that to me is arguably the more significant piece. The environmental situation that we have seen evolve in our neighborhood with the, with the creeks that run through here, the erosion on our property. The creek runs through my yard. It destroys my yard two or three times a year. And these kinds of development projects have caused real problems in the township. And so I don't think that I, we're going to object. This group is not going to object. The, the board is not going to object to the, this project. I see it going forward based on the conversations I've heard here. But I do think it is really important to say to this group, we need to address this issue in our township. The cutting down of trees, the clearing of lots, this is a significant issue. I work for the university. I am a rowing coach at the university. I spend all my time on the lake. You know that we just dredge the lake. We dredge the lake because of the massive amounts of erosion that has taken place. It's significant. It's a massive issue that this town is facing, this community is facing. And when, when I see that lot, that stands out to me. What is on that lot right now is going to end up in Lake Carnegie. It's going to end up in the Raritan River, and it's a problem. I don't know if we're necessarily going to address it, but I want to make, I just want to make it a public statement about it, because it means a lot to me. I don't know if we're necessarily gonna address it, but I wanna make, I just wanna make it a, a public statement about it, because it means a lot to me. And it's not the Modi's fault. Like, I, I look at this, I say, hey, these people want a home, I see it. They're good people, and I understand what they want, and I want that for their families. I think the township needs to think about these things, uh, and we need to bring it forward, because what, that kind of thing, I just don't think should be happening. So, that's all I have to say. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Hi, and, and I appreciate your comment. I think what you should do is bring that up to the governing body. Maybe send the, the council a note, and maybe go in and, and make that argument to the council and, and allow drainage in Princeton, obviously, is a real problem, not just unique to this area, and, uh, it's not getting any better right now, but I think, I think it would be a good idea to bring that up to the council. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay. I think we've heard from everyone. Would someone on the board either ask a question or please make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
The hardship.
Any conditions?
I, I feel that the, the twenty-five trees addresses the number that were removed. I, I think if, if some of them could be larger, that would be nice, but I, I don't feel the need to play, make a condition on, on that basis.
Oh, but that, are you making a condition that there's twenty-five trees to be replanted, just in accordance?
Well, is, isn't that already?
Now, that's what they write as testimony, so.
Oh, oh, correct, because a few are, uh, it, it's a lesser number that's actually required, that's what, um, yeah.
But they've testified to the fact they're going to put twenty-five trees, new trees in.
Correct.
Okay.
So do we want to make that, the, the twenty-five part of the condition, or?
Yes, let's do that, yeah, okay.
Okay, and, and that's what, Mr. and Mrs. Modi, that's what you testified to.
Yes, and, and we have no issue with, I mean, that's.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, I'll second it.
Okay. Claudia, can you, um, please call the roll?
Cohen?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Modi, thanks, I thank the neighbors for their comments and concerns, and, um, good luck on building your home.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too. Okay. Our next case is file number Z twenty-twenty-eight ninety-four, G twenty-twenty-eight ninety-four sixty-one Heather Lane, block two oh-two, lot five in the R one zone. Karen, is, are the notices in order?
Yes, yes, they are, the board has jurisdiction.
Good, okay. The applicants, uh, can you identify yourselves, or yourselves?
Yes, this is Yichuan Lee.
Okay. You're, you're, there's no one else, just you?
Uh, I do have my site engineer stand by. Yeah, his phone number is four eight four, so if, uh, allow him to join.
Yeah, he, he, is he here? Did he call in?
Yeah, he called in, he's in attendees.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you're ready to begin?
Okay, great.
Okay, Derek, um, can you frame this for us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lee is the owner applicant of sixty-one Heather Lane, he's seeking a C one variance permit construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot. The lot does not meet the minimum required lot area frontage or width. Properties located in the R one zone in the former township, and its subject property is not complying with respect to the required lot area, which is two acres or eighty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty square feet, the existing is fifty-nine thousand four forty-seven or one point three-six acres. The lot frontage requirement and the lot width are, uh, two hundred feet, and the existing for both is one eighty-six point nine-two feet. Um, the applicant should advise the board whether they approach any adjoining lots, either to purchase land or make the subject lot a complying lot, or offer to sell the subject lot to the adjoining neighbor. The proposed house does comply with all of the, uh, the bulk requirements. Requested a C one consideration, um, for variances for lot area, lot frontage and lot width. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um, please begin your testimony.
Okay.
Mr. Lee, we need to swear you in, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
If I may, can I share my screen before I begin?
Sure, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. So definitely, uh, before I begin, I just definitely like to thank everyone for sticking so late to listening to my case. And I promise that my case will be quick, um, I don't have much to present. Uh, also, I especially like to thank direct and Claudia to helping me to get to this point, without them, I'm a little bit lost. But as you can see from the screen, so I'm gonna present my slides, so hold on a second. Yeah. So my lot is actually located in the middle, which is highlighted in red. And as you can see from this text map of the township, both of that lot in that neighborhood are in the R one zone. And most of the lot actually are not complying to the, uh, ordinance, because as you can see, the majority of the lot are less than two acre, and with the frontage is also less than two hundred feet. Because of that, um, I having a difficulty to acquire the lane from my adjoining neighbor. Because most of them, if I get the lane, they are not gonna be compliant, uh, uh, either, so they become a really difficult situation. This is the lot right there, when I have, and this one is on one point two four, as you can see, a hundred sixty-one footage. And this one is a bit bigger, but the, uh, the, the house is actually right on the border of the, of the lot, so there's nowhere they can sell me another five or ten feet of the lane on the spot. And then other than that, everything else is all less than two acres. Okay, and then my next slide. So, uh, currently, there is a, a drilling exists on the, the lot. But unfortunately, that, that drilling has been abandoned for over a decade, for the previous owner's financial issue, I guess. So, um, this whole lot has been abandoned for so long, so it's not been maintained, as you can see, the property is so green that pretty much it make the renovation impossible. Uh, the only option is to tear them down and build a brand-new, uh, uh, struck constructions. Um, as you can see on the pictures, this is different, uh, inhabitable currently, and, and all the tree has been dead, has been not been maintained, as you can see, a lot of it actually fell, fell already, become an, uh, axle hassle situation to the, the environments, to the labors as well. So you can see a lot of it has been just that, that die and, and dead and, and causing a disease. So after I bought this property back in this February, uh, I've been discussed with all stakeholders, all the parties, and trying to build a nice new construction, which is gonna be, um, uh, compliance to all, all the requirements. So as you, as you can see in this exhibit on the left, this is the existing footprint. Right, so this is existing, uh, drilling, drilling, and then this is the circular driveway, right? And on the right, it's a proposed, uh, new construction, they are, I discussed my architect and site engineer. So we all agree that we're gonna be on top of the existing footprint. And, and with the angle to minimize the disturbance, and also maximize all the compliance, and also community coherence, because we definitely like the label, we like to make sure the new construction is gonna be planned it very nicely, naturally into the community and bring the, the whole neighborhood more available and, and enjoy living. And this slide shows my, uh, proposed, uh, drilling, it's gonna be how it's gonna look like and compare to my labors existing house, and as you can see, um, it's very similar in terms of the size, the style to all my labors, uh, existing property right now. So it's gonna be, uh, looks very, um, uh, cohesive to the whole entire community and the neighbors. And in fact, uh, many of my labors, um, they saw my drawings, all my, um, proposed, uh, drilling, they are very happy, and they can see this new building has been built, because they are tired with this whole abandoned lot for over ten years, and become a really hassle situation to everybody. And so now they are very excited to see this new building look exact, very similar to what they have already, and bring it as, as part of a nice, enjoyable, um, community. Okay, um, now it's getting to some numbers. As I, uh, mentioned before, I've been spending quite a lot of time discussing with my architect, my site engineer, and everybody trying to make sure that all the stacks are, are compliance to our township's ordinance. So as you can see here, uh, every, almost every aspect has been designed and, and compliance, and except, except those, uh, the lock size and, uh, frontage width, which are out of my control, because there's been like that. And, and then, and all the heights, all that, even the full air ratio, it's, it's more important is increase, I'm not increasing too much, actually, it's only increasing a little bit, as you can see. Uh, e- even the imperious coverage is only eleven percent, even the, the, the allowed coverage for imperious is actually up to twenty-two point five percent, but, um, I'm actually proposed only half of it, because I want to keep the environmental friendly and minimize all the disperatency. All right, so with that said, um, it's getting to my last slide of the presentation. So in a summary, uh, as you can see, uh, I believe that I truly have a hardship situation for this property. And, um, you're granting the, the variance, it definitely benefit the labors and the township, both environmentally and financially. So I really appreciate it if you can grant it, uh, my application, allow me to move forward, and which I'm already ready. Everything's been lined up and with, with this approval, and that lot will become a brand-new situation over there, and as you can see, there's no detriment to all, um, so. And that kinda conclude my presentation, and thank you so much.
Mr. Lee, we, why don't we call this Exhibit A one for you?
Okay, I, I will, yep, thank you, Karen.
Okay, um, is that, uh, is that it? Is that your presentation now?
Yes, that's my presentation.
Okay. Are there any, uh, questions from the board? Can you take your screen down, please?
Yes, I'm doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any, uh, questions from the board of the applicant?
Yeah, I do have a question for the applicant, and that is, um, was there a variance, this is, I guess, my standard question. Was there a variance for the, the house that you're gonna be tearing down on that lot? If you know.
I don't know.
Mr. Richard, are you aware?
No, sir.
Okay, about the houses to the right, I guess to the east of it, um, which have similar non-conforming geometry, are there variances for those, if you know?
I couldn't find the original subdivision, but it appears that it was all subdivided at one time, and with less than standard lot, so I don't know if it was done prior to the lot changing, so, but I couldn't find a variance for this property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? I have one question, what, can you explain the best, I mean, I understand where the basketball court is, but, um, that's basically the area of the old garage?
That's correct, it's on the top of the existing, uh, garage, and I cannot reuse repurpose for the basketball court, because I'd like
So it's just gonna be paved, it'll be paved, obviously.
Uh, yes, for the, uh, then the circular driveway will be paved.
And the basketball court will be paved?
The basketball is currently as a concrete, a flat, flat, it's already a concrete flat, it's very beautiful.
You're going to leave the concrete slab of the old garage?
That's right, and then propose a rating, the rating, uh, under the compliance.
A railing around it.
That's right, that's right.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions, any questions of the applicant?
Steve, there was a, in the Q and A, there's a question from Andrew Hollingsworth, I, he wanted to ask a question, so.
Okay, well, let's see, let's just get finished with the board first, and then we'll see if, uh, are there any other, any other board questions, board members' questions? Okay, all right. Okay, now we'll go in and we'll open the public portion of the hearing, and, um, Claudia, um, Eve, if you can let the participants in, so we can hear from them?
We have one. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Okay, there was, there was someone else a moment ago, what was? Wasn't there somebody else just a second ago?
There's somebody on the phone, but I don't know who they are.
Okay, all right.
I think that's his, uh.
Yeah, he's my site engineer.
Oh, he is, okay, does, does he wanna speak, by the way, or not?
Uh, only if you have specific questions about the site plan or the grading, uh, otherwise, I don't have anything to add to, uh, what Mr. Yi's already stated.
Okay, all right, so since, uh, there, just hang on in case any questions do come up.
Okay.
All right, so, um, is it, uh, Mrs., Ms. Hollingworth?
Yeah, Carol, Carol Hollingsworth, I live at seventy-five Heather Lane.
Ms. Hollingsworth, do you swear affirm any testimony you give will be truthful?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Um, I just have a few questions. My husband, Andrew, and I are delighted that the, uh, house next door to us will be torn down, so, um, I'd just like to put that on the record, but, um, I do have, um, three questions about the demolition itself, and just one question about the actual, um, size and footprint of the replacement house. So I would like to know if the demolition is actively planned, and what the date would be, and what is the duration of time that the demolition will take place? I would like to know if the demolition will be done by a professional licensed contractor. Um, and I would like to know what the plan is for removal of the demolition debris. And I'm, my question really relates to will it be allowed to lie on the property for an indefinite period of time? The applicant has, um, taken down approximately thirty large trees and, and left them, uh, jumbled up on the property. Many of them were pushed against our property, a few even crossed the property line into our yard. And so that makes us just have a little bit of concern about how the demolition debris will be handled. And so that makes us just have a little bit of concern about how the demolition debris will be handled. Um, hopefully not in that manner. And then my fourth question just is, um, I would like to understand how the house size is changing from the existing footprint. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Yi.
Can I answer now?
Please.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, uh, Mr. Hollingsworth, uh, nice to see you again. Yes, to address your first question, yet the, uh, demolishing walk will begin, uh, as soon as all the permit, uh, has been granted. And that's what the, the, the reason we are here tonight. Um, so assume that if this is granted, the walk will begin probably after the holidays. Of course, I don't wanna start in the middle of holidays to disturb the labors. So it will be sometime in the January. And then the way it's gonna handle, yes, will be hired by the licensed, um, builders to do all the demolishing. And then also hallway or the debris. Um, the reason that tree locks has been left on the side is still pending due to this, this valence, uh, requirements. Um, as soon as all this has been moved, and then that all be removed as part of that demolishing work. And then the last, for the second half of the question, the current, um, house. As you can see that me, I'm not sure, have you seen, have you downloaded my, um, my architecture plan from a website, that way you can see, can compare the existing to the proposed to fully understand it?
I haven't looked at it in detail now.
Okay.
Excuse me, Yi, are you able to get sheet two of three on, on the screen? Cause that, that sheet shows both the, uh, existing outline and the proposed at the same time.
Yep, very good, thank you, uh, Mr. Minervini, let me show my screen again.
Yes, please.
Okay. Alright. Okay, so Ms. Hollingsworth, are you able to see it?
Yes.
So, this, if you see this, this line, like, the, the shadow line, or maybe, uh, Mike, can you present to her? You can.
Uh, well, I, I could, I could describe, there's a kind of.
Whoa, 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 sir, you, I, we don't have your name, we don't know anything about you, and you have to be sworn in, we don't know who you are, okay? So, what is your name, please?
Michael Minervini, M I N E R V I N I.
And are you a licensed engineer?
I am.
In what state?
Pennsylvania and New Jersey.
Okay. And you're the project engineer for, for Mr. Lee?
I am.
Alright, and you swear affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thanks.
Thank you, have you testified before this board before?
I, I have not, not in Princeton.
Okay, alright, thank you, um, please proceed.
I, I was, I was gonna say, I, um, on, on the drawing there is the, um, solid outline of the, the house. And there's kind of a, you know, a, a line made up of what, what, what could be described as back slashes. And there's a, there's a call up that says outline of existing house foundation for reference, pointing to it. So that, that hashtag line, hash backslash line is the outline of the existing dwelling. And the solid line going around, uh, would be the proposed dwelling.
So the, the footprint is a bit larger than the currently existing footprint?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
What is that significantly larger?
On the, uh, as you're facing the properties from the street. Um, is that just a parking area, the circular driveway on the right-hand side? Um, is that abutting the house, what is that? Move your, move your cursor.
That is the, uh, that goes into the garage, the garage is on that side of the house.
Okay, so that's just the garage access, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to.
Okay. So, and that might make the house look a little bit bigger, since the garage has moved from the basketball area to the other side of the house.
So just from a standpoint of the, the coverage of the house compared to the coverage of the current house. When you take out the garage, that will be a basketball court. And you take that square footage, so you're, you're, how much larger are you in terms of house footprint? As opposed to what currently exists?
Approximately seven hundred square feet.
Seven hundred more square feet of ground coverage?
That is correct, yes, for the new house, including garages.
Okay, and that obviously is plus than the paved area of the basketball court.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and, are the, does that, um, are you comfortable with, with the answers to those, the questions?
Well, it, it does sound like a lot, I was under the impression that the new building would, um, be the same footprint as the old, uh, house, the existing house. Um, it's just that since it is a non-conforming lot, um, I think there'd be some concern about enlarging the home that's on it and the, you know, runoff, increased runoff from impervious surface and that kind of thing. And I also have a question about the basketball court. Will there be lighting on that?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm not planning to put lighting on that at night, it's not a goal to make it available during the night.
Okay, then I guess as far as the increased, um, impervious, um, coverage on the land and the larger footprint. I would just like to hear from the planning board, um, what they think about that.
Well, we're, we're, we're the zoning board.
I mean, I'm sorry, zoning board.
I understand, um, they are in conformance with the ordinance.
Okay.
An undersized lot with regard to frontage area and things like that, but they meet, appear to meet all other aspects of the zoning requirements.
Yeah, and Mr. Hollingsworth, if I may, uh, as you see in the impervious coverage, is not actually increased that much. It's actually about two percent of this, the entire one point three six acre lot, two percent, that's probably about, that's then like, uh, a few hundred feet, so it's not that much. And also, the, oh, I'm not planning to change that grading of that lot. So everything is gonna be, be on top of the existing footprint, so all the, the, the grading, all the, the, the things around the house will kept the same as, as it's today.
Well, except for the area of your garage, extends out from the footprint, right?
Uh, yes, except on the right side, uh, on the right side, this, as you can see here, actually, uh, the right side that has a the largest open space. And currently due to.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, this is the largest, largest, uh, open space. And currently due to all that, um, the issue with this house, this has been, become a debris area. There's a lot of garbage has been put in here. Uh, and, and actually to address Mr. Hollingsworth's concern, by, by relocating the garage to the right-hand side, it's actually is in the beneficial to, to your property. Because this actually reduce that, the property line for about, for about twenty foot, sixteen to twenty foot away, away from your property. Because right now, this is the wall, like, this is where close to your property. But now, be, remember, this is gonna be tiered down, it's gonna be part, part, part of the front yard. So it's actually, uh, in the beneficial to your property, because now you get more open space in, in your, in your, uh, property, yep.
So the grading, is it, is it true that then the grading along the, the, um, side that faces the Hollingsworth home, uh, is gonna remain pretty much the same and the regrading, you're gonna do on the other side to accommodate the new garage?
Yes, that's correct, yep. There's no change on this side, no change on the this side, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hollingsworth, you have, are you, uh, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, no, I don't, if it complies with the, um, zoning laws, I, I have no other questions.
Okay, I just have one question of Mr. Yi. Um, the Mrs. Hollingsworth asked about the, uh, the demolition and, uh, again, you know, the timely removal of debris from the property. So once the demolition starts, it will move along, I'm asking this question, once the demolition starts, then it will move along, uh, continuously and debris will be removed, uh, as it's, as the house is torn down?
Yes, I have already had my builder ready, as soon as this, this, uh, variance has been approved, we are ready to go, yep.
Alright, okay, alright, um, okay, um, are there, is there any one else that wants to speak right now? I guess we only had one person, Claudia?
I, I don't see anybody else.
Okay, alright, so, um, seeing or hearing no one, uh, I'll close the public portion and, uh, open it up to the board for discussion. Comments, questions?
Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, um, Mrs. Hollingsworth did ask what the board thought of impervious coverage. And I would like to reiterate with the applicant, it said, although he's increasing it a small percentage. He's actually only doing impervious coverage fifty percent of what he's allowed by code to do. So I think we're real happy that, uh, he's not pushing the envelope at all, he's doing significantly less.
Good point, good point, good, okay, are there any other comments?
I move, we grant the application?
I want it, um, I wondered about the tree replacement, we haven't talked about that. Is there a plan for that, you're gonna miss that?
Um, so though all the trees are all dead trees and all are ash trees. And I already, before I reboot, I got the application, application, um, approved by our department, the, uh, boards, Taylor. So it's been approved and documented. And by the law, by the ordinance, uh, it's not required to, um, to put it back on, they're all dead trees.
So you're not gonna plant any trees?
Um, I might plant a, a few to, on the borderline, on the property borderline, just to kinda get into as a privacy, yep.
Are there any trees that are required? I'm sorry, are there any trees that are required to be replaced as part of this application, Derek?
Um, hold on a second, checking. Taylor said they filed a permit to take down approximately twenty ash trees, um, which don't require replacing.
Those pesky ash trees, okay.
Yep.
Right, so there are no, there are no trees that are required, that would require replacement trees?
That, that, I mean, that's my understanding, I don't have the report.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, um, question, any other questions? Eve, are you okay with that?
Well, I, I'm not okay with that, but I, I don't know if I have any standing to be not okay with it. It seems like that's a big property and even if the, even if Princeton or the arborist wouldn't require it, it's, it, I, I think we know that, you know, it, a big piece of property like that, all properties need to have a certain amount of, um, I would say some trees unless it's a baseball field or something, I mean, I, I think it, it's, uh, I saw what it looked like when I came, went out there today and, uh, uh, I can't, I guess they were all ash trees. I hope, I, I hope my arborist is not really just making a lot of money on me, because I, I have been having mine treated and they're so, but I, you know, I, it seems to me like it might be great to have some replacement trees, even if they're not required.
Um, let me address that, um, just so you know, half of this lot actually has the trees in the backyard, which I do not cut down. So most of tree that I cut down is on the site where I'm gonna relocate the garage. And then a few in the front of the, the house, which is, uh, um, hassle, very dangerous trees, because they all dead. Now, that is gonna fall down any single minutes, as you can see here, there's only two trees has been near into the, the, the property. So both of tree that I cut down is all in the household places. And the other half of the land, I did not disturb, I did not go in their, their section at all. So all the tree that you're talking about, in fact, it's all in the front that dead trees.
Would you consider replanting some, just? Just for the sake of runoff and things like that, I mean, just, I think, I think, I, I don't know that we have any standing on that, but I just, I think it would be.
We can ask, I think we can ask, and it's up to the applicant to respond.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, as a Curtis and also as the, um, compliance citizen to the township. And then, yes, I will plant a few, um, lines, especially in the front yard. And they make the front yard, uh, is all abandoned to the labor and make a very nice lot, because right now it's just so ugly. Yeah, I, I agree, we need to, in fact, I did budget for some, uh, naysk, nayscaping work after the construction is done. So as part of the nays, nayscaping, then yes, I will make sure that I plant trees, especially in the front. And actually next to my neighbors, just become a very good nature, um, privacy fence, yep.
Can you give us, can you give us a number of trees that you would do?
Um, I really don't know at this moment until I finish that, and then I would look at that size. But, um, I would say the lip in, uh, definitely would be a bus, more than like six, six, seven of a tree in the front.
Okay, yeah, we just, if, if it's acceptable to you, um, then we can just put that in the, uh, in the, uh, resolution.
Yeah, sure, acceptable, let's put, just put six tree, and I would definitely come from that. More than likely, I will plant more, I mean, as you can see, when everything's done, we'll see where it fit in and then plant a new tree. But, yeah, I would agree to put six for now, that's the number that in the front of it, right in front of the house, so.
Okay, and I assume they would be the two and a half inch caliber that we would.
Sure, yeah, of course, nice, beautiful, uh, cherry tree, yeah.
Eve, are you comfortable with that?
It's a good start.
Okay, good, good. Okay, um, we, anyone else wanna say something? I do, I believe we have a motion to approve. Um, we have, um, comments, is there a second? Okay, Mr. Stein, seconds, so we have a motion, we have, uh, um, a, uh, comments, uh, from Eve and a commitment from the owner to plant six, two and a half inch caliber trees. Um, and, uh, okay, if there's nothing else, um, I guess Claudia, can you call the rule? And, okay, if there's nothing else, I guess Claudia, can you call the rule?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Bolson? Yes. David?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck, Mr. Yi.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. I guess I guess that's a wrap right now for tonight. We're done. And we have our next hearing is going to be next week. And that will be our regular meeting of the month. So that will be a longer meeting, I assume.
Can I try make two minor comments?
Certainly.
Steve, we can never see you. However, you have your camera here.
Oh, me?
See more than your ear.
Oh, I was hoping I really redid my ear for the night. Okay. Okay, I'll I'll try to.
The other comment is, George, could you turn your mic up? Because we can never hear you.
Oh. Is this better?
No, there must be a setting on your mic that'll let you turn it on.
I I will. Yes, I will try to do that.
What do you think of everyone's lighting?
It's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
When I do about four or five or six Zoom calls a day, so I'm very conscious of.
I can tell that you're.
You can't see or hear or.
You'll be you'll be the Zoom critic here.
No, I'm just trying to make it. I'd like it to flow better is all. That's, you know.
Okay.
I locked up my cats this time, so they're not in the picture.
That was entertaining.
Yeah, I thought it was entertaining.
George was lying on the floor behind me and I would see when I see what happened when he saw your cat on the screen. Okay, thank you very much. And I guess we'll see everybody next week.
You.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Night.
Good night.